No, no, we override. We sustain the veto. Could it be? Right.
Okay. That's it.
Right. Edum come to our clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangan.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Absent.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Seminelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Nine members present, Mr. President.
Would the audience please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The other public hearing clerk will read the first item on the agenda.
Item number one is a public hearing on a petition from National Grid regarding installing conduit on Bradford Street. Twelve parties interest the public hearing for National Grid of North Andover construct a line of underground electric conduits including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way always here and after name. The following, the streets and highways referred to Bradford Street, National Grid to install approximately one to two inch galvanized conduit from pole number 2036 for service to a new house number 182R.
I have a sign and sheet, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did we want to invite?
No, is a petition present?
Yes, Mike Cadima.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing first. Please come forward. Sir, would you please give your name and your company and your address?
My name is Mike Cadima, from 17th Street, National Grid.
Any questions? Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cadima, Cadima, why do we need this? Yeah, conduit.
The customer that built the house back here, it's in the area, this is what they applied for, for what concerns a conduit line to a pole down the Senate Drive or construction maintenance.
And this is going on an existing pole? It is. Okay. And thank you.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. -- excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. We had a brief discussion. There'll be no box in front of somebody's lawn on the sidewalk because those are kind of unsightly. There's a few in Everett that I don't know how they put them in front of somebody's house, but these will be underground, so totally hidden, nothing on the street like pole. See, that's the kind of, oh, I see. But the pole's there already. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Counselor Delasola.
How you doing? Is the pole on the short side of the street or the long side?
Long side.
I was just talking to Counselor Megan. That street wasn't done too long ago, if I'm correct. Are they gonna, once they go across, are they gonna grind curb to curb once that trench is complete?
To be honest with you, it was about four times once ago that the customer actually installed it. He was informed that you guys were going to be repaid, people were going to be repaved in the street. So he wanted to put his conduit in ahead of his hearing, so he wanted to, um, say.
So, wait a minute. So he put the conduit in already?
Mm-hmm.
Now, are you putting conduit in also?
No. He installs it and we'll just come in here and petition because anything in the public way is, well, we have to come to the city council to that.
Just put your mic on.
I'm sorry.
I didn't realize it was on. Up top. There you go. Not flipping up the button. There you go.
Yes. He knew that the street was going to be repaved, so I guess he went ahead and did that. And then he informed us afterwards this is what he was going to do.
So that's all you're doing is running the cables itself through the line?
Actually, the customer does everything, but we're just here to see you folks because it's the public way. He ran his conduit across the street, but before the street was paved.
So you're going to go from the short side of the street to the house?
He did.
He did, he did everything. So this is all done and you're coming up, we're coming up now to get the okay? Okay. Is the trench there now? Can you see the trench on the new road?
No. You guys, when the road was ground right down to gravel and stuff?
That's when he installed it?
Yeah, he put it across the street at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I think he went across the street with telephone, everybody, because there were three conduits on the pole when I, when I last time I looked at it.
Before we paved it?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Sir, what is your function? Are you the engineer?
I am, for electric.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Excuse the customary thanks.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you for hearing. Please, yeah, I know, please stay until we finish our hearing. No, you can sit.
Okay.
And please stay here in the hall until we finish our public hearing. Seeing this is a public hearing, I want to ask the audience if there's any participation. I'll ask three times for those in favor and three times for those that are opposed to this petition. So first, we're going to go with those in favor. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? That's three times I hereby declare the closing of that part of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this petition? I hereby declare that part of the hearing closed. Matters before you.
Fable action on the order.
Second. Motion made and second for fable action. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please enter the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays. The petition has been granted. You're all set, sir. Thank you.
Make a motion to open public.
Any, any sign of public participation?
I don't have any sign in for public participation, but I make a motion to open public participation.
Okay, motion made and seconded for public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on any matter whatsoever? Nobody would like to address the city council on any, it doesn't have to be on the calendar either, any matter, okay?
Make a motion to close public participation.
Motion made and seconded to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation has been closed. Clerk will read the second item on the agenda.
Mr., Chairman, I do have a sign and sheet.
Yes.
If we could please suspend the rules and take items number 21 and 22 collectively.
The motion made and seconded takes items 21 and 22. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk will read item number 21.
Item number 21 is an order creating four temporary easements by eminent domain. Be it ordered by the city council, city of Everett as follows. Whereas the city council, city of Everett acting on behalf and in the name of the city of Everett hereby declare that the public necessity and convenience require that four temporary easements for a term of three years be taken by eminent domain for a public purpose, namely for the reconstruction of sidewalks. Whereas all preliminary requirements prescribed by law have been met or waived as required under Mass General Law, Chapter 79, Section 1, now therefore be it ordered that acting through and under the authority of the city council and pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 79, is amended in any and every power and authority to it granted or implied, the city of Everett hereby take for itself four temporary easements for a term of three years for the public purpose of reconstructing sidewalks within the following areas of land that the city of Everett known and numbered as 37 Water Zav, identified on the map of Assessor's parcel D00300217, containing 2,607 square feet, more or less, more particularly shown in a plan recorded in book 1435, page 29. Temporary easement area, the temporary easement area is a parcel of land consisting of 301 square feet, more or less shown as parcel number TE-6, Plan Sheet 10, from the Mass DOT Division Madeline English School Preliminary Right-of-Way Plan, prepared by Tool Design Group. Owner is Gregory Booth Trust. The deed is recorded, Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. Award of damages is $1,450. The second is 79 Prescott Street, identified on the map as parcel DO0400236, containing 4,620 square feet, more or less, more particularly shown in a plan recorded in book 56698, page 266. The temporary easement is a parcel of land consisting of 246 square feet, more or less, shown as parcel number TE3, Plan Sheet Number 9. Madeline School Preliminary Right-of-Way Plan for the Mass Department of Transportation by Tool Design Group. The owner is Stephen Cadillo. Award of damages $1,250. The third one is 171 Bell Rock Street, identified on the map of Everett Assessor's parcel D00600102, containing 2,469 square feet, more or less, more particularly shown in plan recorded in book 41231, page 129. The temporary easement area is a parcel of land consisting of 169 square feet, more or less, shown as parcel number TE-1, Plan Sheet Number 8, Mass Department of Transportation, Highway Division, Madeline English School Preliminary Right-of-Way Plan, prepared by Tool Design Group. The owner is 171 to 173 Bell Rock Street condominium, Mass deed of Joseph T. Bono, Michael J. Bono, recorded Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds. Award of damages $1,060. And the fourth is 180 Bell Rock Street, identified on the map of the Assessor's parcel D00400025, containing 3,725 square feet, more or less, more particularly shown in a plan recorded in book 1185, page 92. The temporary easement area is a parcel of land consisting of 255 square feet, more or less, shown as parcel number TE-2, Plan Sheet Number 8, Mass Department of Transportation, Highway Division, Madeline English School Preliminary Right-of-Way Plan, prepared by the Tool Design Group, owned by Renee and Maria Bellinger. The deed recorded in Land Court Book 1185, page 92. Award of damages $1,350. And be it further, and be further ordered that a representative of the city of Everett shall cause this order of taking to be recorded and registered in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. This order shall take effect upon passage from the city council and approval by his honor, the mayor.
Okay. Yes, Counselor. Counselor Mangan?
I'm here.
Is what?
Yes.
Please come forward, please. Please sort your name and address and your function regarding this petition.
Jay Monte, I work in the Planning and Development Office and I'm managing this project. It's called the Safe Roots to School projects. It's being administered by Mass DOT and basically it's doing upgrades to some of the sidewalks and intersections around the Madeline English School to improve quality of walking for students getting to school in the morning and the afternoon. So as part of that process, these temporary easements are just needed for construction, contractors, workers to access some of the sidewalks and not taking, in all but one of the cases, not taking property to obstruct anything on it, they're taking it to basically be able to do the work in the public right of way.
Right.
So because it's using federal funds, the federal government requires that compensation be given if a contractor steps on somebody's lawn or replaces a fence or anything like that. But again, they're not taking property in four of the five easements. The one they are taking property on, it's a permanent easement and it's a place where the sidewalk currently exists, but it exists on private property. So again, just to clear up, have the ability for the contractor to do the work, they do have to take a private easement there.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I know this was explained, but I want to just make sure I understand it. We're not going in anybody, we're not taking anybody's property?
No.
Okay. So what's the compensation for?
The federal government requires if a contractor, say they set up a sidewalk formed for the concrete, and the contractor steps on somebody's lawn, they have to obviously access that property.
Right.
And federal government determines that there is compensation due to that person for accessing their property.
Only if, only if that accident happens, or do compensation?
It's not, it's not an accident, it's just knowing that they're going to step on their lawn.
Oh, that, right.
You know.
So all these people that are involved, all these folks that are involved, they're okay with it?
Yeah, we've spoken to, I think.
You've spoken to all of them?
Just with all of them.
Do they know about it?
Yeah.
All of them?
We've notified all of them, we've done appraisals, they've all been notified. They've had the opportunity over the 30 days to appeal the value that they're being given. Nobody has appealed that compensation, so.
Okay, that was my concern.
Yeah.
To make sure that they were all notified because we don't want any problems after the fact.
There's a very strict process that you go through with the federal government to do that, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. That was one of my questions as well. I wanted to make sure that, and I'm sure that you did, you went through all the steps and you notified the residents. And no one's appealed. Has anyone objected in any way, or?
No, I've had a few phone calls, just kind of asking for clarification, kind of similar questions to what you folks have, but nobody has objected. And the reality is too, that when we do similar work as a city, we don't compensate.
Sure.
And so this is one of those, it's almost free money for these folks that they're getting some compensation.
Okay. And why three years is just the idea that might be the timeframe involved with doing the work?
It's a standard timeframe.
Just keeping it open-ended and?
Yeah, I mean, the project will probably take one season, but just in case there's a delay or something like that, they can leave it open for three seasons.
And if we were to address the work sooner, would we be removing the easements, or would they go, would they expire on their own term? It's probably a question for the city solicitor, but.
I think that they would expire on their own term, and we use the three-year term because we were instructed to do that by the Department of Transportation. We're going to be recording all of these this week, so it, in the three-year term will be recorded, so.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't have any other questions. Mr. President, after that though, I would request that the chair ask if there's anyone affected that's in the audience.
Anyone what?
Anyone who's affected by this who's in the audience. You might want to speak. There probably is no one.
I will ask.
But it would make me feel better.
Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. It appears that some of these addresses, all of these addresses are to do with the Madeline English Elementary School.
Yep.
I know a couple of the properties, one is on Bell, the corner of Bell Rock Street. So just so I understand this, you have to step onto the prop, the construction people step onto their property, and that's, and what are they going to do to the sidewalk?
So they're improving ADA accessibility, so new curb ramps, in one case they're adjusting the island at the corner of Bell Rock and Tremont Street. They're doing upgrades to the intersection of Tremont and over to the school itself. They're doing upgrades to the trail connections going to the school from the Northern Strand Trail. So it's not major work, it's mostly minor work. The major portion is really the trail connection to the school where these easements are is really just.
It's the first time I've ever seen anything like this. This is something new?
It's a program that's fairly new within Mass DOT, yeah.
And if a fence is broken, I'm sure that's covered, right?
Exactly, that's covered, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, before they leave though, might I ask if there's anyone in the audience that would be affected by this order? That would be in the vicinity of 37 Water Zav, 79 Prescott, 71, 73, Bell Rock Street? Anybody? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much for appearing.
Thank you.
You guys can hang around because you've got the next one coming, too, you don't want to?
Okay.
Okay. Motion for favorable action, second, anyone?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
None.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
The, eight yeas, one nays, Mr. President. The petition has been granted. Okay. Clerk will read item number 22.
Item number 22 is in order creating permanent temporary easements. Be it ordered by the city council, city of Everett as follows. Whereas the city council, city of Everett acting on behalf and in the name of the city of Everett hereby declare that the public necessity and convenience require that a permanent easement be taken by eminent domain for a public purpose, namely for the reconstruction of sidewalks. Whereas all preliminary requirements prescribed by law having been met or waived as required under Mass General Law, Chapter 79, Section 1, now therefore be it ordered that acting through and under the authority of the city council and pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 79, is amended in any and every power and authority to it granted or implied, the city of Everett hereby takes for itself five temporary easements for the public purpose of reconstructing sidewalks within the following areas of land that the city of Everett known and numbered as 174 Bell Rock, identified on the map of Everett Assessor's parcel D00500213, containing 3,332 square feet, more or less, more particularly shown in a plan recorded in book 1448, page 108. The permanent easement area is a parcel of land consisting of 16 square feet, more or less, shown on the plan of land showing locations of easements for purposes taken by Mass Department of Transportation, Highway Division Plan, shown as parcel number E-2, Plan Sheet Number 1 of 1, sheet prepared by Niche Engineering. The owner is Sokol Kappa. Title reference deed of Robert and Paula Jean Gregorio, recorded Middlesex South District in book 1448, page 108. Award of damages $880. Be it further ordered, a representative of city of Everett shall cause this order of taking to be recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds. The order shall take effect upon passage from the city council and approval by his honor, the mayor.
Thank you. Would you please identify yourselves one more time, please?
Jay Monte, I work in the Planning and Development Office.
Colleen Mahier, city solicitor. Can I just make a comment about the easement? There was a clerical error when I typed this. The clerk read it's really only one permanent easement in this particular order, and it says in the one, two, third paragraph, it will take five temporary easements. So you just might want to amend the order to reflect its one permanent easement.
So we, just a point of clarification, Mr. President. So we're taking out for itself the phrase five temporary easements and inserting therein one permanent easement?
Correct.
Fine.
And I'll send you a cleaner copy so we can have that recorded.
We need amendment to that effect, Mr. President.
On the amendment, motion made and second for the amendment, any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, Counselor Capone, on the amendment. Okay. On the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The amendment's started. Counselor Appolitano.
Thank you. Now, this is part of the same project as item 21?
Yep.
Can I just ask, why is it distinguished differently from the others?
This is the one instance where it's a permanent easement as opposed to a temporary easement. The temporary easement, like we just talked about, was just somebody to be able to step on their lawn and.
Was this what we were referring to before, where we have a sidewalk that's actually private property?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
It's very, sixteen square feet, it's almost nothing, so.
Okay.
And I spoke to the homeowner, he was purrified, so.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for clearing that up. I just want to make sure that I'm crystal clear. So it's 16 square feet that we're talking about that's permanent, and it is actively a sidewalk.
Right.
But it belongs to private individuals, so we need to change that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have no other questions.
Counselor Delasola.
I'm just curious, do we do this with easement? Just educate myself. When we do a sidewalk or a street over, do we get, do we, do people get involved as much as this, that you're going to step on their property to do the whole street, the sidewalk itself?
It depends who's paying for it. Basically, if it's city money, if it's chapter 90 money, we don't. But in this case, it's federal money, and the federal government has a very stringent process as to if they're paying for, you know, an infrastructure investment. Basically, I want to guarantee that what they pay for is going to be preserved for that use, and so they don't want to build something on somebody's property and not know that it's going to be their property.
Even stepping on the property?
Yeah.
If your city does the work, they don't?
Yeah.
Just deal with each customer as it comes?
Right.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for appearing.
Fable action on the order as amended.
Second motion. For favorable action as amended, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor Appolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli.
None.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Eight yeas, one nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, one nays. The petition has been granted. Clerk will go back to the, we don't have sign and sheet, no sign and sheet.
I believe somebody else just walked in. I don't have any, any, uh, sign and sheet.
I'm working on it.
Okay, yeah, Counselor Appolitano walked in.
Clerk will read the, next item, Peter.
Yeah, let me just find the item first.
Awning, yeah. Where is it? Yeah.
Number five, 10. Is this, what was that? Where is he?
Projecting over the public way, Counselor.
The awning issue on Chelsea Street.
Item number 10.
That's it, number 10, yes. Mr. Chairman, can we take item number 10, please?
Motion made and second, take item number 10. Out of order, up the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item 10, please, Mr. Clerk.
Item 10 is a petition project to project over the public way at 120 Chelsea Street for the purpose of installing an awning at Chelsea Street Bakery. Everything is in that folder.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Appolitano.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask the petitioners to come up before us?
If you'd like.
I mean, I saw them come in, I just wanted to make sure that they, if they're here for matters, that they were addressed. I have no information on this personally.
Okay. Make a motion.
Other than what I'm reading in the piece, yes.
Is it the awning company or is it the?
Clerk.
Really should be the awning.
Douglas Baker, I know where that is. Is there anyone in here representing Douglas Baker Company?
Who are the awning?
Would you like to come forward for a few questions, sir? Yes, come forward, please. Douglas Baker, I know where that is. Is there anyone in here representing Douglas Baking Company? Would you like to come forward for a few questions, sir? Yes, come forward, please.
Okay, alright, alright. Just where this, this is right on the corner of Clinton. Oh, yeah, okay. We just, actually, I just noticed.
Would you jump up, please, give your names and addresses, and, uh, while you're here?
I am Christopher Cyan, and this is my grandfather, Oscar Burion. We're at one oh eight Harvest Street in Waldham. And, um, we, we came here for an awning permit.
Hey, where?
The awning permit is for one twenty Chelsea Street.
Thank you. Counsel DeFlorio?
I do have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, I didn't know you had a question.
Thank you.
Counsel Napolitano?
Now, the actual location is, the physical location is actually on the Clinton Street side of the building, correct?
Yes, correct.
Alright. I, 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 that's my neighborhood, I actually live two blocks from there, and I've actually been very impressed with how much you cleaned up the area there. So, um, now, your, your plan is to continue to tuck business the way you have, you're just looking to be able to make it more visible with an awning?
Yeah, that's the one thing we have to do. But the reason why we put our awning over there is a little bit, um, stick out a little bit bigger because it's a lot of sun hit the building, it goes right to the, to the storm, and nobody can see inside, so we need the shade right there, so that's why we tried to do that on it.
Okay. I have no questions, no further questions.
Counsel Del Solo, Chelsea Street is that on, uh, uh, where is it, Clinton Street?
Clinton.
Don Clinton?
The address is Chelsea.
Uh, Counsel DeFlorio? Who else?
Uh, first of all, welcome, and thank you for cleaning up the area, we really appreciate it. I have only one question, and the way I see this, the awning's gonna be orange?
Uh, yeah, that's because it's most visible for the vision, that's why.
Okay, we're trying to, I'm, we're trying to keep the city more uniform, so would it be a problem when you changing the color? Is anything, uh?
Yeah.
Would that be a problem for you to change the color? Is this already in the works, or? We're really trying to keep the city more uniform, instead of making orange, green, with, try, we have an ordinance which there should be, uh, red, crimson tide, red color.
Yeah, I think that is no problem, change for red.
We, we would appreciate it, it's still a bright color, and you do white.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you, we appreciate it.
Is it okay if you put the name in Dogland Bakery, okay? Is it okay if you put Dogland Bakery, if you do?
Whatever you want.
Yes, okay. Only I wanna know before I put it there. Thank you. I wanna take it out, excuse me, bakery, but Dogland Bakery. Thank you so much.
Counsel Matuski?
Dogland Bakery. Because it may be a warranty, I have a Dogland Bakery. That's why I wanna put the name in there. Thank you.
Thank you, mister president. Um, I see you have a piece of orange paper, is that the color that you were thinking of?
No, that's not.
Oh, that's a, that's an application, okay. That's a little loud, I.
No, it's not gonna be that color, it's gonna be red.
Red.
Red. Well, we went through this process, sir, a couple of months ago, um, you know, we're trying to tone down the colors, black and white is nice and classy, but, anyway, make a long story short, Jack from Ultimate Windows is your landlord.
Yes.
Yeah, and he doesn't, he, he keeps his property just so. Been in business for many years. And as Councilman DePolatano said, it's one of the nicest neighborhoods in Everett where you are, and there's a church involved in that building, isn't there? The church on one side of it, or in the back?
I think so, yeah, I think it's, um.
Now, they rent the church, they have Sunday service.
Oh, okay.
You're not taking the whole building, you're just taking the, is that an ice cream pallet, too?
Yeah.
So you do ice cream and bakery and?
I think it's only bakery.
No ice cream. Yeah, he doesn't have ice cream, yeah, I do.
Oh, you do a little ice cream?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I might come by for some.
Please. He try the bread, too, he make everything.
Oh, he makes the bread?
He the guy.
It's a nice to see a family business, I just want to say that. And you work there, too?
No.
You help your grandfather?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's very honorable. Uh, I'll be voting for this, sir, but, uh, I want to wish you luck, but it is a nice neighborhood, and you have to clean up the litter out in front and so forth, because we have issues with some takeout places that litter and so forth. It is a nice neighborhood, I wish you the best of luck.
Now, paint everything, he looking nice.
It looking good, thank you.
Yeah, he paint everything, Jack.
Oh, he does all the painting, too?
No, Jack did.
Oh, Jack did, yeah.
Yeah, he did that.
Yeah, he's a good man.
That's good, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for appearing.
Thank you.
Full action. Second, okay. Alright, have a motion for favorable action, second, please?
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, on the matter of the awning. All in favor? All opposed?
Voca.
Oh, I'm sorry, voca, voca.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Mangan?
Yes.
Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel Polatano?
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, mister president.
Easement has been granted, thank you. Clerk, I think we're all the way up to number two, so, number two.
Item number two is a veto message from his honor, the mayor, regarding an ordinance requiring chief of police approval for overnight construction work. Dear Mr. President and members of the council, after careful consideration, please accept this letter as notification of my veto of city council bill CO three five five dash sixteen in ordinance requiring chief of police approval for overnight construction work. This bill as amended would allow petitioners seek approval to perform overnight construction work if first, if first authorized by the city council. Recently, the Wind Casino Project was given a longer wait to green light when the Mass Department of Environmental Protection recently approved the chapter ninety-one waterway permit allowing construction to proceed. After discussion with the Wind Construction Team, I propose an ordinance allowing police chief Baze or his representative to authorize some nighttime construction work to take place when appropriate, in order to allow for construction to proceed as efficiently as possible. This ordinance would be consistent with the chief's powers of enforcement pertaining to our noise ordinance. This ordinance would apply to the Wind Project or any other construction project. However, under the city council's amended ordinance, instead of contacting the police chief or the officer on duty to get permission to finish time-sensitive work, for example, of concrete pour, the petitioner would instead need to seek council approval, approval to work into the evening. Because there would be no way to secure council permission in a timely manner, they would have no choice but to stop work by seven PM, losing precious hours and costing potentially millions of dollars. Every time wind or any other developer, utility, or business wants to do any nighttime construction work in the city, they would be required to submit request in writing to the city clerk, wait at least forty-eight hours for a special council meeting, hope for a quorum of city council, and also hope for a vote at that meeting. This cumbersome process would be required regardless of the cost of delay or danger to the public. This ordinance establishes a process that is neither efficient nor reasonable. Situations will arise when work on an important project will need to extend beyond normal business hours. The city council is our legislative body, and by design has a rigid and often lengthy process for reaching decisions. That process is not appropriate here. Rather, permission granting authority most appropriately resides with the chief of police, consistent with those other duties around enforcement of the city's noise ordinance. How the city of Everett manages and works with the wind development to build its reservoir will send a strong message to other private businesses that are seeking to do business in Everett. We must implement procedures that facilitate the completion of important projects and demonstrate that the city is a strong partner in development. Therefore, the reasons mentioned above, I am vetting this bill. Sincerely, Colleen Maria Junior, Mayor.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Uh, thank you, mister chairman. Uh, the way I understand this, this is only in regards, I want a clarification, because I think I didn't understand it the first time. It's only in regards to the noise, but if anybody wants to work, any contractor that wants to work overnight, who needs a special permit like we gave to Wind, they would still have to come in front of us, is that correct?
There's not truth.
So, the chief, right, so the chief is only gonna deal with the noise situation, but if we have any other, he's gonna deal with all of it.
No. If I may, mister, no. If I may, mister president, no, uh, this would give the approval for overnight construction work to the chief of police, not just has to do with noise. I think what the mayor was saying there was that he was relating it to the fact that a lot of the noise type of enforcement stands with the chief of police as well, as does Sunday work. You go to the chief of police if you have to, uh, work on a Sunday, you have, you go to the chief by state law.
Okay.
So I think that's where he was leaning towards, but no, has not just noise, it's, if you, they want to do overnight construction work, they go to?
Well, I can see like, you know, emergency electricity, uh, or gas, or anything like that, but if we have a big project coming up, and it's in certain areas, I, I just think we want to have a say. That's, that's the only, you know, I'm, I'm not stopping this, okay? We want, we want the casino to go on, we want all the construction to go on, but, like I said, if it's an emergency because it's a electric problem, because there's a gas problem, there's a gas leak, or something that has to be done, then obviously they can't wait for the, uh, for the councils to have a meeting. But as far as any big project, whether it's a hotel, or any, anything, even a house, building a house, we, we want to make sure that there's no residents being affected by it. Not that I think the chief wouldn't do that, but I just think we should have a say in that situation. So, I don't know, but anyways, that's my concern.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, mister president. I, I read the letter as well, and I understand the mayor's concern. Um, I just want to be clear with, with my colleagues that if we uphold the veto, then there is no mechanism whatsoever for anyone to do overnight work. If we override the veto, then we have a mechanism. Maybe it doesn't work in every situation, but it's a mechanism. And what I would recommend is that, um, we override the veto, and I will prepare something for our next meeting, an amendment, and what I would suggest is that, uh, because there will be times when there might need to be continuation of work. And, you know, as far as the Wind Group goes, I've spoken with them, at the present time, now, the scope of construction might change, but the present time, they feel that they're within the scope of our existing ordinance, so it won't be an issue with them. Uh, a new, another developer down the road, it might become a problem for them at some point in time. And as far as pouring cement or something of that nature and costing millions of dollars, I don't, I, I don't think that that would be the likelihood of the situation when you're putting together a project of any kind of magnitude you plan carefully. What I would suggest is, uh, I will, if it's agreeable with this council, override the veto so we have a mechanism in place. I will prepare something for our next meeting, an amendment of this, something along the lines that, uh, if an individual, organization, developer, whatever it is, is looking for overnight work, uh, in the event that it's one evening or two evenings in a month, that would be permissible, but if a developer is looking for anything more than one or two evenings within a month, then it's something that should be by rights coming before the council, because as my colleague had stated, you have to keep in mind that, uh, and this is no knocking the chief, because I, I, I think he's more than capable, the reality is that if you're going to impact a neighborhood, if you're going to impact the residents, we as a city council need to be involved in that, that's part of our function. And we, we can't just push that aside and say, well, it'll be more convenient for someone else to do it. And that way, I'll try to bridge in language that if we have one night, two nights, emergency, something of that nature, it could be the police chief or, uh, you know, whoever the officer in charge is designated. But barring that, if it's going to be something that's a little larger than that, that is going to impact the neighborhood, that is going to impact the residents, we need to be involved in that, we need to understand what's going on, why it's going on, to what extent the resident's going to be impacted, because at the end of the day, when someone starts doing work in a neighborhood, we're gonna get the phone calls from residents, and unless we're involved in the process, we're not even gonna know anything is going on. So I think it's very important that we stay involved, this, I do think it falls, um, under our domain as the city council, and to alleviate any concerns that the administration has, or maybe some of my colleagues might have, I'd be more than happy to draft up some language that'll talk about amending this in such a way that, one or two, emergency, anything of that nature, fine, that's police chief. Anything beyond that is something that is going to impact the neighborhood significantly, and it needs to come to this body, and that would be my recommendation, mister chairman.
Counsel Napolitano?
Thank you, mister chairman. Um, yeah, I'd like, I'd like some clarification. This is a communication, so really, the only action we can do at this point is accept it and place it on file? We don't have the ability or the authority to override a veto. Now, I've been at, I've been there a number of years, but I was not a, this is something that I've never, has never come before this body, at least.
Yes, uh, in fact, uh, this particular item, yes, you accept the communication, however, under unfinished business?
Okay, so it's.
Number fifteen is the actual vote on whether to, uh, override or sustain the, uh, the mayor's veto.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's important that we, we keep this in perspective. We've got a lot of projects going on. Now, I know, I know, I've got a reputation of opposing the mayor on a lot of issues, but, you know, personally, I don't, I don't do it personally, I do it because I feel it's good for the city. In this particular situation, I don't think it's cut and dry, it's not us or him or what he wants. I think there's a medium, and if we could sit down as a group, collectively as a body, with the, with the mayor, and work out his concerns and our concerns, I think we, we better serve the city this way by not, by coming up with a solution that'll get these projects resolved in a manner that he's comfortable with, where at the same time, we don't feel that we're losing authority. Now, I, I use that term, losing authority, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not, may not even be using it in the proper context, but the thing is that I think that's where some of the concerns of my colleagues are, is that we're, we're, we're losing some of what we had for powers before. I don't think that's necessarily the case, I think we just need to word this in a way that all parties' concerns are addressed. So if there is an issue that needs to be, uh, extended, the developers have immediate contact with the chief. We have area, but other areas where we're gonna be, have concerns, where we're gonna be receiving the phone calls, our concerns are addressed as well. There's a medium, a happy medium here, and I think we just need to address it. So when we get to the proper item, I'll make a recommendation on that, but at this point here, I think the proper motion is just to accept the communication, place it on file.
and place it on file.
And then, and then suspend the rules and take out of number fifteen.
Counselor, Counselor Megan? Okay, Counselor DeFlorio?
Uh, what I, what, my concerns that I want to know is, if we hold this over, it goes to committee, or whatever, whatever's going to happen, okay? Is this going to hold up the hotels and the casino? Because if this is going to hold it up, we can always vote on it and then change it. So it's, it's not a big deal. We can, we can change it ordinance anytime. So we can vote on this now, let the project go forward, and then next month, change it.
Well, the project is going forward, and they tend to work, I mean, I don't know if you know it, but they tend to work 24 hours a day for six days a week, but, until the project is completed.
I understand, but they need to get a permit from someone. Is it, they're going to get it from us, or the police? Right now, if this ordinance doesn't go through, they need to get the, they need to get the permit either from the council, or the chief of police. So let's let the chief of police deal with this big project, where there's no residents in the area, it doesn't affect anybody. And then if we want to change the ordinance, we'll change it a month from now. It's not, I don't think it's a big issue.
Ms., I'm sorry, never mind. Counselor Capone?
I, I just, I just want to clarify, but I, I think that, I'm hearing our clerk, I think it's right, we probably should suspend the rules, well, accept the communication, suspend the rules, take out item fifteen, and then debate on that, if you want, and then I, I could address the council's remarks at that point, just for clarification on where we're at, whether we vote yes, or whether we vote no, and what happens. So I'd make a motion, we accept the communication, place it on file.
Okay, Counselor Napolitano?
That was a motion I already made. So let's, let's, let's vote on the motion, and move on to break the item under suspension, so we can have a discussion on this.
Motion made, second to accept the communication, sent by the mayor regarding the overnight, overnight ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have accepted the message. Okay.
Move, suspend the rules, move, suspend the rules and take out number fifteen?
Okay. Hold on for one second, Counselor, number fifteen? Okay, motion, one second, to suspend the rule, take out number fifteen. All in favor? All opposed? Item fifteen is before you. Please read him, item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen, an ordinance filed by Councilor John Daniels, President, an ordinance applying chief of police approval for overnight construction work. It reads as follows, veto obtained by the city council of the city of Everett, and follows, whereas the need to, to do overnight construction work is counted to be an accessory, whereas said work is covered prohibited in the city of Everett, whereas approval of said work is a question of public safety convenience. Therefore, veto obtained by the city council of the city of Everett, follows at section thirteen eight, sixty-two G fourteen, loud noises, and noises hereby amended, subsection six. By adding to the last section after the phrase seven a.m., the following phrase is last first authorized in writing by the city council, and be it ordered, if this ordinance shall take effect on the day of subvention approved by the mayor. Said item was, uh, veto by the mayor within the ten day period, being July twenty-eight, twenty sixteen. The question now comes before the city council on sustaining or overriding the veto of the mayor.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President, and through, through you to our clerk. If, if I'm accurate, I think we have two courses of action. Well, we could do different things, but with regards to the veto, if we sustain the veto, then there is no ordinance at all, there's nothing addressing after hour work. If we override the veto, the underlying ordinance would go into effect, anyone looking to do work after hours would have to petition the city council.
Yes, we can't allow upon the override of the city council.
And in order to override the veto, you need two-thirds votes, that would require eight individuals. Two-thirds, it would be, of the eleven?
No, it's one of the last.
Okay.
They were passing a, a money order.
Okay. So, with that said, my recommendation is, I, I know that there's been a lot of suggestions that have been made. I've, I've got no, I've got no qualms with sending it to a committee. If, if a group wants to, look at it, we could even send a committee of the whole, have everyone work on it. I've been told by the WIN folks that this doesn't affect them one way or the other right now, in their current scope of work. So we won't be holding them up, which is great news, because the last thing any of us want to do is hold them up. So I would strongly urge my colleagues to override the veto, just so we have something in place, because without it, we've got nothing in place. And then, whatever the will of the council is, if they want to do a committee of the whole, and try to work out, you know, all of the, all the kinks in it, they'd be fine, but at least have something in place, so somebody could petition for that kind of work. And, and I think, I think it might just be a, a simple adjustment, as I had mentioned earlier, that if it's going to be here and there every once in a great while, then that could be the police chief. Obviously, you want to tie everything up to have it come in front of the body, but if you're going to consistently have a developer that's looking to do overnights, that's going to impact the neighborhood, I think that that's something that needs to come in front of the city council. So, uh, my recommendation, my motion, Mr. President, is that we, we override the veto at this point in time, and if anyone wants to add to that with regards to referring to a committee of the whole or whatnot, we can do that. I'd be more than happy to amend something, so that at our next meeting, we could be talking about some adjustments to it that would make it work, I think, much better. So I'd put that in the form of a motion.
Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand the concerns of my colleagues, and it's not often that me and Counselor Napolitano agree, but I, I think we, we should, we should all come to the table and, and figure something out, what works for everybody. But whereas there's not currently an ordinance in place now, I would feel more comfortable not overriding and having nothing than being blinded by something that could potentially change in the future with no real guarantee, because it's up to the will of the council, and I don't want to be stuck with something and then regret it down the line, and that's my only concern. Thank you.
Counselor Megan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor DePiero and Counselor Napolitano. I would make the recommendation now, then, like I said, I, whether it's a committee of the whole, or public safety, I'm confident, as Counselor Napolitano previously said, you have the mayor, people from WIN here, or anybody else, and we, let's have a discussion, an open discussion, however long it takes, and let's get something that everybody can agree upon. Instead of just overriding a veto now, or whatever, let's just come together, like we're supposed to do. There's an issue out here, there's a little bit of a gray area, so we come, we sit down with the mayor, anybody, other, other parties involved, let's work together, as each suggested, and let's get this thing resolved. So I would make a recommendation that we put it, you know, into, whether it's a committee of the whole, or public safety, I would, committee of the whole, then I make that recommendation.
Counselor Napolitano?
I mean, this is, to me, this is something that piggybacks on what I brought up at our last meeting. We have a committee, Legislative Affairs, that is there to create, to write ordinances, and yet, there's been no items sent to that committee in months, okay? This is where this kind of groundwork is done. I mean, I, I agree with both parties here, I mean, and, and, and in the context that we do need to have something in place, we do need to have a discussion, we do need to make some recommendations on this. But we keep trying to do it here, instead of where the actual work is supposed to be done. The idea is, this stuff goes to a committee, concerned parties bring their, bring what they're, they're, bring what they have to the table, you iron out the ordinances, then it comes before the whole for a vote. But we seem to be wanting to do everything on the whole, to get everybody together, so we don't have to, you can't pull everybody in all the time. That's why you have these subcommittees. Now, I'll, I'll go along with either way, I mean, I, either way, I think we do need to have something in place. The city is going through massive development over the next decade, and we need to be flexible enough to amend our ordinances, so we can't think the way we did 20 years ago. Can't think the way we thought 10 years ago. We need to be thinking a little differently, and that's sometimes going to take a little forethought, you know? I would hope that whether we vote, veto this or not, that my colleague in one-one does still submit his recommendations. As our resident attorney, you know, he really has the most, you know, has a better handle on how the law works here, and I, and I trust his judgment. But I don't want to see that we're going to run into a situation where it's starting to bang heads with the administration. There'll be times to do that legitimately, and I'm not saying that this is not legitimate, but I think that there is work here that can be done, so all parties are, can come to an agreement.
Counselor Motuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know where this becomes an issue with the mayor, it's actually to do with the police department, okay? That's my point here. The mayor is right down the hallway here, the chief of police is a couple of blocks away. Noise has become a serious issue in this community, okay? Whether it's a motorcycle with no muffler on it, planes bombarding the city with airplane noise, uh, trucks, heavy trucking. I happen to live in an industrial, mixed-juice neighborhood, okay? We put up-
Excuse me, Counselor, we, we want to, we want to pretty much stick with the noise of construction.
This isn't, this is to do with noise, Mr. President. Now, I don't know where, where else you want me to go with this.
We're talking about construction.
Well, there's, that's humorous to some people. Let me explain something to you, okay? We've got hotels going on up in the parkway, where I live.
We all know that, Counselor.
Okay? Now, let me just say something here. We put up with trains, planes, trucks in my neighborhood for a hundred years.
Counselor, Counselor.
I'm just saying, this is to do with noise. Now, wait a second, Mr. President. I'm talking about noise. You're not ruling me out of order. I'm talking about noise. I agree with Counselor Capone. If you want to just give the whole shooting match to the chief of police, well, I think that's passing the buck. That's what I'm trying to say. This has nothing to do with the mayor, has to do with the chief of police. We just voted for a three-year term for him, okay? I think that we should rather, let Counselor Capone put something, we're talking about noise here. Where's planes not a noise problem? We can't even get a decimal machine demonstration in the city council chambers. I've never seen it in 35 years I've been up here. Has anybody else seen one? That's to do with noise. Now, you know, Mr. President, that I've asked, I have issues with noise. And as a matter of fact, there's lawsuits filing right now for sleep fragmentation. I know some people think it's a joke, but it's not. And when all this construction goes on, it's going to be compounded. So we've got some issues in our neighborhoods that we have to protect. I have not, there's nothing to do with, the WIN casino's a whole different ball of wax. I'm talking about everything else that's going to happen in this city.
Talking about construction.
That's noise. Noise.
It's not noise, it's construction noise.
Wait a sec, Mr. President.
You don't think planes, trains, and automobiles, because that's not part of this-
Why, you don't think cement trucks make noise?
Sure they do.
Well, what do you think's, we're talking about noise, and construction noise. I, by the way, Mr. President, I was a bricklayer for 15 years, I worked at the Ritz Carlton, I worked at a lot of jobs. I know what the noise levels come from, from these buildings, okay? We're fortunate that there's no residents in most of these neighborhoods, but when it comes down to certain sections that are going to be developed, we've got to protect ourselves. And, you know, we, we got one policeman right by the WIN casino, one policeman, okay? For that whole $2 billion project. Give me a break. Who's to decide how many policemen is, is a good idea down there? We got a guy that was here two weeks ago, a gentleman, on, that put some wires in. He said, "I pay for the two policemen. I, I want more activity from the police department, be honest with you, on any construction job." But, you know, let's get back, I have another piece on here, I'll discuss the noise level. And if you think that I'm out of line when I, when I'm talking about noise, we're talking about noise on all levels, loud and unnecessary noise, straight here. You know, if you think I'm out of line, well, I don't think so. I've had enough of noise complaints in the city for a long time, and I'm not giving my authority in this chamber up to anybody. I want to know what's going on, I want to, I take the complaints myself. I think Counselor Capone has a good idea, draw something up, we're all on the same planet, and do it right. That's all I'm saying, I'm not against anybody. I'm in favor of construction work, but you've got to do it right. And I don't think, uh, the police chief is going to actually take the complaints that we're going to get. Nothing against him, it's just the way it is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to send it either to committee, or committee of the whole, sometimes when things are really, really important, the reason why we recommend the committee as a whole, because in a regular committee, we don't have input. If I'm not a member of the committee, I don't have input. So if this goes to public safety, the people on public safety can ask all the questions, but I, as a council, can't ask all the questions. So it comes on the floor, and we have to ask the questions all over again. So this is the reason why I always recommend when something is an issue that's real, not that everything is important, don't get me wrong, but something that's really imperative, that we all have a lot of questions, then I recommend the committee as a whole, but that's the reason why. And I agree with the council from one-one, the reasons why there are committees, and these should go to committees. But because of the change of the charter, or the, we have to change something, the rules, something needs to be changed, where all of us have the input in these committees, that we get invited, and, and we have an input, just like everybody else. So something has to change. Thank you.
Counselor Megan?
Mr. President, now, I'm just, when you edit it, I made the, the motion for favorable action, to send it to the council on the whole, and Counselor DeFlorio seconded it.
Your motion is for?
To send it to committee, to the whole.
What? This item fifteen?
Yes, to send it to the whole, invite the mayor, and anybody, like I said, the whole council, and then also, any, whether it's WIN, or anybody that wants to come, you know, construction, people come here, whatever, to, the chief of police, thank you.
So, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And we get his input too, you know, but like I said, but certainly talking to different people, they were, you know, they did have concerns, they had legitimate concerns about, you know, if things needed to get done in the jiffy, to sit here and try to come back to the council. That's why we want to get into this committee, whether, in that way, because, for example, if it goes to one committee, now, Counselor Capone's got some legitimate things that he wants to talk about, if he's not in that committee, he can't discuss that stuff. So we may agree on the veto thing, or not agree on it, or the override, but the idea is that by going into that committee, like as Counselor DeFlorio said, it's a very intricate thing that we've got going on here, and as Counselor Motuski said, you know, going on, there's going to be a lot of different stuff going on. So we want to make sure everybody gets their input, everybody's heard, and if we have to sit here for three hours or four hours and discuss it, that's our job. But this is something I believe, and I agree with Counselor DeFlorio, we all have to have a voice in this particular situation.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to get clarification through you to our clerk. I may be wrong, but I think all we can do, our hands are kind of tied on this piece. We either have to vote up or vote down on it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, council has to consider the measure, no sooner than 10, no-
Late than thirty.
More than 30 days after our receipt, the return, which is July 28th. You returned it to us on July 28th, it's not tonight, it's the July 28th date. And they shall consider the same measure.
Right.
So it's either up or down on that same measure. You can't send it to committee, amend it, and then bring it back out again. It's, the quite, the only really question before you is whether or not to sustain or override the, the mayor's veto. If someone wants to present something in two weeks, say, the mayor's veto is sustained, and someone wants to submit something in two weeks, they can. But if it's overridden, boy, am I backwards. If they're going to sustain his veto, no, I'm right. If it's sustained a veto, they can put something else, they override the veto, it stays the way it is.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Confused myself. If you override the veto, it stays that it's the city council.
Right.
And becomes law without the signature of the mayor. If you sustain the veto, then nothing exists at this particular time, and someone could submit something in two weeks.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Clerk. That's exactly what my concern was. And whatever this body wants to do is fine. The thing I just want to make clear is, you know, we, we put an ordinance in place, it was vetoed, our hands parliamentary are tied. We either have to override the veto, if we override the veto, we do have a mechanism in place for a developer to come in and petition to do overnight work. If we sustain the veto, we don't. We've got nothing. And it depends on, on whatever the wish of the council is, I'm fine either way. I just think it's better to have a mechanism in place if somebody wants to come in and do some work, rather than have nothing in place. And so that's why I was making the recommendation to override the veto. And I want to be very clear, that's all I'm doing. I'm looking to override the veto, simply so that we have something in place. Because if we sustain the veto, it's not the end of the world, it just means there's no ordinance. I'd rather have something in place, that if somebody wanted to petition in the interim, they could. And that's why, Mr. President, I had recommend that we override the veto, have something in place, I'll draft up an amendment to, to submit, uh, next meeting, and at that point in time, we can debate putting it into a committee of the whole, putting it into a, a standing committee, whichever it is, but I, I do agree with some of the sentences that it said this evening, when you do have something that is, and I understand my colleagues' frustration, because we do have a committee structure for a purpose, but when you do have an issue that really affects everybody in the chamber, rather than having a committee have it back out and rehash it on the floor, and go into the meeting again, in those limited purposes, you're better off having it as a, as a committee of the whole. So that's why I'm recommending that we override the veto, just so we have a mechanism in place. And then, for our next meeting, I'll put an amendment in, that, that'll kind of tweak it, I think we'll, we'll be able to make it work, so that if it is an emergency, if it is an overnight here or there, so be it, the, the chief or his designee could, could make the call. But if it's going to be something that's going to be more extensive, and is going to impact the communities, it, it really falls on us, as the elected officials, to make sure that anything that's going on in those neighborhoods isn't going to be damaging to our residents. So that's why I'm making the motion that we override the veto, and once, if, if that's successful, I'll make the amendment for the, for the next meeting. Otherwise, if we sustain the veto, which is fine, we'll have no ordinance whatsoever, and we'll have to start all over, round one, put something together, and, and go from there. And in the interim, if somebody wants to come in and develop, they can't.
Could I, could I offer this as a suggestion?
Sure.
Refer to committee of the whole, and bring your amendment to that committee. Otherwise, if we wait till the next meeting for you to bring that amendment to the committee, we still may want to refer it to the whole.
Yeah, and it probably will, Mr. President, the problem is, we can't. We can, we can either, we can only sustain the veto, or override the veto. That's all we can do tonight, because it's been vetoed. I agree with you. It would fast-track it if we could do that, because then we'd push that aside and just go ahead and start acting on it. But our hands are tied parliamentary, we, we can only sustain the veto or override it. And really, the choice comes down to, if you sustain the veto, there's nothing in place; if you override the veto, there's something in place. And it really depends on how you feel about that. I'd rather see something in place now, and then we can amend it and fix it, rather than have nothing in place. have nothing in place. So that's why I was making the motion to override the veto.
Counsel Polatano.
Thank you. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I actually share, I share the sentiments of Counsel Capone. The, it's more important that we have something in place than not have anything. The amount of time it's going to take, if something were to come up to come before us under the overridden ordinance, and the amount of time it's going to take us to correct it or make an amendment, is going to be the same. We meet in, what, two weeks? Three weeks, okay? But we do meet in the same amount of time that if, if we, if we do override the veto, and this ordinance goes in place as is, any issue's going to come before us in three weeks anyway. So I, I think that, I, I feel more comfortable having something in place. I'm concerned that it sends the wrong message, um, to the administration, but on the other hand, I agree that this is an important item, I think it's important we get this right, and I feel more comfortable knowing we have an ordinance in place as long as, at our next meeting, we're addressing it. Because we're not letting it go, okay? If we were to override this and do nothing on it, shame on us, we're blowing a lot of hot air tonight, and we, we blow enough of it as it is. So I, I, I will support the overriding the veto, for that reason alone.
Counsel Motuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I just want to be, uh, clear, and I'm sorry that, if I seem passionate about noise levels in this community, I, uh, you know, I really don't feel sorry about that, but how often is this going to happen, that contractors are going to come up here for night, I mean, this isn't the new charter that we do this, is that correct? It's not. Now, maybe I'm missing something, I have never seen, or maybe there was no nighttime work being done, is this the first time? All right, so this may only happen once in a blue moon, maybe not at all, after the Wynn Casino. I've worked, I've never worked night shifts, you know, in construction, I, you know, in some cases, you need to do that, so this may not even happen again. While I'm, and that's even more so that we should keep it within the council, see how this works out at Wynn, you know, if there's a problem, and that's kind of isolated over there, but, you know, the Charleston-Chew area is right next to it now, too, in those residents, but I'm just saying, this may never even come up again. But I, you know, and that's even more so that now that you corrected me, Mr. President, that we should keep it within the council. You know, and that's just how I feel, this, this may not even happen again. But, um, if it's, if it's a once-a-year thing, or once every five years, I don't see the work involved. You know, the contractor has to understand that we want to keep this city, you know, peaceful, as far as noise goes, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President. And I also agree with Counsel Capone's motion, thank you.
Counsel Delasola.
I agree with Counsel, uh, Capone in all of this. Um, but me personally, I feel the police chief and the details who are out there on these job sites, I have worked there in the past, will know better than anybody in this room how it impacts the neighborhood. I want to say, and all the neighborhoods are being worked, but if they're working down the Marlin Line at Willis Street for three nights, and I, I know they're going to be there, but a police chief, if it's, we have a, a letter sent to us, that will be out there, but they're going to know the impact the traffic has, if it's one-way traffic or two-way, better than anybody here, because we're not out there. We don't see jobs that were done a month ago on Willis at Main Street, we might not, we might never know that job's even out there, but it's only a, a two-day job. And if we don't get a call from the neighbors, as far as I'm concerned, everything's flowing good. But I do want to say, in what goes on out there, if we feel that it's a, a two-day job, I don't want to have a meeting up here for a two-day job that's at Tremont Street at Willis, just for example, Willis Street. I mean, I don't think we have to have a meeting for every single night job that goes on. I do want to, if I override this, yeah, we have a say, but my question is, if we sustain this, the police chief will have to say right now, and there'll be nothing. So if we sustain this, there's not, nobody's, nobody's in charge.
One question, one answer, answer comes from the floor.
My question, you, Mr. President, if we don't, we sustain this, what happens if somebody wants to work next Monday night, on a basic job? What's nothing?
No ordinance exists, the, uh, contractor's prohibited from 7:00 AM, I mean, until, from, I think it's 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, something like that. Yeah.
Who had to say last year? For example, who, who did this last year, about years, five years ago, who?
Nobody really asked for nighttime work. You know, we, we haven't had the.
So if somebody wanted to work at night, they just came in, went to City Hall, got the permit?
But I don't think we've had that situation, I can't recall that happening, except maybe the, um, the, the gas company on, on, um, Ferry Street, I don't know if they've asked anybody to work, I think they did.
Never had a night job.
Michael?
No, I remember them asking. Now I remember them telling us they were doing it at night.
Well, emergencies, I know emergency's a different story, emergencies, I was on one last night, they come out, bang, they work, next day, you get whatever the permit's supposed to be.
The other thing is that, coming before the council, I know that Counsel McGlaughlin has asked a couple of people to, instead of doing it during the normal hours, they stay, do it overnight, like from seven to eight in the morning, we said, okay. I don't know if that was granting the permit, I guess it was, to work at night, so, uh...
But if some, somebody came to us and wanted to work Prescott at Tremont, it's different, it's quiet down there, but how do we know, I know we're all residents here, we lived here all our life, but how do we know the impact if you cut one lane down compared to the police department? They'd have a better input than anybody. And again, I still want to, we're going to keep going over this and over this all night here on this, on this one item, but it's just, um, so if we override this, I think we have a small plan, we can take it from there, and that's the choice of the body.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, but I just, I just want to make sure that we're all very clear. You know, there's been a lot of good ideas about who should be doing what, and that's unfortunately, the next step of this thing. The only thing that's in front of us, Mr. President, is whether we override or whether we sustain. If we sustain, there is no ordinance, no overnight work can happen. If we override, then there is something in place, they can do overnight work if they come before the council. Whether or not it gets impacted or not, in the interim, we're working it out, is, you know, there's neither here nor there. But what I want my colleagues to understand is, when you're voting for this, you're just voting on the very sharp issue of, do you want something in place until we fix it, or do you want nothing in place? Uh, and that's really what it comes down to. If you override the veto, there'll be something in place, if you sustain the veto, there's nothing in place. With regards to who makes the call, how it happens, and the adjustments that go down the road, that'll be the next meeting. Unfortunately, tonight, all we can do is sustain or override. And with that, unless anyone else has anything to say, I'd like to call for the question.
Much may I call for a question in favor? All opposed, so moved, okay. Question before us is, do we override the mayor's veto, or do we sustain the mayor's veto? A yes vote is to override, a no vote is to sustain. So on that, Michael called the vote, uh, clerk called the vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
No.
Counsel Mangan.
No.
Counsel Motuski.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin, whoops, Counsel Napaltono.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Seven yeas, two nays, the mayor's veto is sustained, requires nine votes.
Yeah, requires, no, there's only nine of us here, one, two, three.
Requires nine votes, you've got two-thirds of the full council.
Okay. I think it's eight, but it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, still.
We're still one shot.
It's the same as an appropriation, which is nine, so. Eight? It is eight. But it's still fair.
So the mayor's veto is exact.
Yes, the mayor's veto was sustained.
Clerk, we'll read back to the...
Regent Odebez.
Item number three.
Item number three, sponsored by Counsel John Handler's president, order increasing efforts net school funding appropriation. Be it ordered by the city council, the city of Everest follows required net school funding of the city of Everest formerly set at ninety thousand four hundred, ninety million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and whereas that figure was later increased to ninety thousand six hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighteen, ninety million six hundred and ninety-five thousand, I know I don't work with you, Everett, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, and whereas the Massachusetts State Legislature has provided the additional twenty and twelve thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars difference to meet the requirement, and whereas these funds must now be added to the previously approved School Department fiscal 2017 budget, therefore be it ordered by the city council, the city of Everest follows the two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars hereby raised and appropriated to the School Department's fiscal year 2017 budget.
Refer to the next meeting?
Yeah, I would.
Does this have to be referred to the next meeting?
It's not, this is, it's a...
No, it doesn't, it's, it's an order.
It's an order, so, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, it depends on whether...
It's routine or not.
I don't think, it's not routine, it's, uh, we've never had, it's up to the president.
No, I'm, let it go, we'll, we'll vote on it.
Move to suspend rule thirteen?
Suspend rule thirteen, and...
No, thirteen, uh, no, thirteen.
It's thirteen by itself. Okay, so make a motion to suspend rule thirteen B. Motion made to second suspend rule thirteen B, uh, any further discussion on the voting motion? Yes.
I'm, I'm making, I'm making, this is the last time we have to approve a money, the mayor's budget, to approve the money. This is the last time that any money, um, this has, this has not happened, I'm not mad, but I'm not, 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 I'm not.
It's the last time he's approved, we're not giving him money.
This is, this is, this is money that's already been approved.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify what he said, because, uh, he said that this will be the last time that, he's voting for this, this will be the last time he votes for additional appropriations to the school department if they exceed their budget, that's what he said.
This has not meant the school department exceeding their budget, what this is?
Well...
Mr. President, I'm not, 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 I'm not. Did you get that? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify this for the audience. We are not giving any extra money to the school. When this budget was done, the state hadn't given us a, a, an amount, is that correct? Not, it was a different formula, so this is a different formula, what the state, we're only approving what the state is giving to the school, the net school spending, this is not extra money that's coming from the taxpayers. I want to clarify that, and I vote favorable to him.
It's the last time he's voting for additional funds, that's basically what he said.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel, and thank you, Counsel, both of you.
Thank you, my pleasure, my pleasure, I have a project, that, that is, all right.
On the audit, did I have a motion? Motion made, second to favorable action?
Yep.
All in favor, no, I mean, sorry, any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll, please.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Motuski.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Mr. President, if we could take items, um, four, five, and six collectively, they're just donations, and then, um, also some, we can't take them?
Six is an order, six is an order.
Oh, it's an order, I'm sorry. The, um, no, they're all orders. Um, just, um, well, take, well, four and five to collectively, the donations, just have the clerk read the reading, and just give the amounts, and a letter of thanks be sent.
Second of all.
Four and five, please.
Yeah, motion made, second, take four and five collectively, have the clerk read both items, all in favor? All opposed, clerk, please read item number four, followed by item number five.
I should have the right one. Yep. Item number four is in order, be it ordered by the city council, city of Everest follows that donations from the following donors totaling two hundred and ninety-five dollars to the council on aging donation account are hereby accepted. J.L. McGlaughlin Company, twenty-five dollars, Janet Capanoni, fifty dollars, the Bengston family, and one hundred dollars, Maureen Troy, ten dollars, Teresa Rashadi, ten dollars, and Elaine family, one hundred dollars. The next one is, be it ordered by the city council, city of Everest follows that donations totaling one hundred and sixty dollars to the Office of Human Services, Services Program are hereby accepted, and authorized to be deposited into the department's donation account, donations generally generously provided by the following, ten dollars from Ruth Lang, fifty dollars, and, let me do it to fifty dollars. Fifty dollars from Jack McGrath, and one hundred dollars from Tasty Garden.
And we will all send them all thank you letters. Motion for favorable action, motion second, all in favor, please answer the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePiero.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Motuski.
Yes.
Counsel Napaltono.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, two nays, you pass both, all of us, thank you very much. Uh, clerk will read item number six.
Item number six, in order sponsored by Counsel John Handler's president, be it ordered by the city council, city of Everest follows that a donation of Target stores of one booster seat, one child safety seat, valued at one hundred and thirty-seven dollars eighty-five cents, is hereby accepted.
Motion for favorable action to accept the donation, and to send a letter of thanks, seconded by Counsel Mangan, all in favor, please answer the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePiero.
Vote, okay.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Motuski.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Seven yeas, two nays, you pass the order, thank you again. Clerk, we add item number seven, is it?
Item number seven is, uh, in order, declaring in eighteen, eighteen, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-nine Pierce Lance firepumper surplus, whereas the reference inventory is no longer in compliance with National Fire Protection Association standards, therefore, be it ordered by the city council, city of Everest follows that a nineteen eighty-nine Pierce Lance firepump is hereby declared surplus, and be it further ordered that once declared surplus by the Honorable City Council, the inventory will be sold at public auction.
Second of the motion. Made in second, favorable action, any further discussion? Hearing that, clerk, clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Mangan.
Yes.
Counsel Motuski.
Yes.
Counsel Palatano.
Yes.
Counsel Semenelli.
Yeah.
Counsel Hamlin.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you pass the order.
Can we put these into committee?
clerk, read item number eight.
The next two into committee.
Item number eight is potential lodging house license from Caritas Communities DBA Hancock Hotel at nineteen Hancock Street.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If it's appropriate, I know we did it, I don't know, a month or two ago, I mean, I'm not even on that committee, but, um, to have this sent into, these next two sent into our committee, just to make sure that there's, everything's in line, bring the owner up here, I think it's a good thing, just to discuss it, and then certainly approve it at the next meeting, but, um, at least, at least to have it, um, they have one of those committee meetings, maybe like they did before the, um, in the last council meeting that we had, and, uh, you know, the owner has to get up here, if there's any issues, the owner can at least be up here to speak about.
Is this attention, is this the thing of attention?
Yes. Yes, and the police reports are attached for your strategic review between now and Yes, and the police reports are attached for your strategic review between now and then.
I just think it's a good thing to have.
I think it was six, the six comments during the year, six, six violations, whatever you want to call it.
I know, but, and, and not even that, but I just think that, especially where we're going through a lot of changes in the city and everything else, I just think that to bring people up here on a yearly basis, whether there's a lot of issues or not, I just think it's a good thing to put a face, because some people are new to the council, and they may not know who this gentleman is, whatever, and these people that run it, and, so I think it's appropriate, and at least my opinion anyways, to put it into committee and then just.
Okay, you want to invite, uh, refer to committee?
Yes.
Community and Business Development.
Community and Business Development, and you want to invite?
Yes, invite the, uh, petitioner.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Just on the motion.
Okay, motion made in second to, uh, refer this to the committee on licenses and to invite the petitioner, Counselor Matuzki.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it's my understanding, this, this company doesn't pay any, uh, real estate taxes, is that true?
No, they pay.
Are there taxes on company? I, d, d, don't quote me on, I believe on one, I think, and I'm not positive, I think on one they're a nonprofit, on the other it's not, but I'm not positive. Yeah, well, I'm just curious about that, but I don't have a problem sending it to committee, but, and you'll notice on, at this, these properties that, uh, most of them, you know, where they are police requested, ab, for sure, but, uh, as you can see on Norwood Street, disturbance from neighbors, motor vehicle accident, a lot of times when you see things on these reports, it's nothing but, I mean, well, it's, it's information, of course, but, uh, check well-being, people get sick and so forth, you know, but, I was just curious if they pay taxes, I don't know if they're a nonprofit organization or what it is. I know it was brought up on the council a few years ago, but that can be brought up at the committee meeting, that's true. Thank you.
Counselor, uh, Capone?
They are exempt.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to our clerk, this is a renewal, correct?
This is a renewal, and as usual, with this company, it's horrendously late.
Okay, so has it expired?
Yeah.
So, okay, so here's, here's where we're at. Um, if we, if we don't grant it, then technically they're in violation. No, it's definitely not our fault, they got to be a little more timely, but, uh, okay.
Counselor DeFlorio?
When were these supposed to be renewed?
January.
So they were already late anyways?
They are.
And what do we do on a case when someone's late? Do they get fined? Do we have anything on the books?
No, he's got to start from absolute scratch, he will be charged, once this is approved, he'll be charged not only the, the price of the license, but his application fee, which unfortunately is set by state law, and it's like fifty dollars a year.
So basically, by him not renewing, it's going to cost him fifty dollars?
Yep. From what I understand, however, I think there was some required work that they had to satisfy for the building department. Building Department didn't sign off until, uh, July twenty-first. Now, I don't know if that's because they could not pass sufficient, uh, inspections, or if they were that late in getting it to the building department to have it signed off on, I don't believe so, but I think it most likely was that they had some things that they couldn't satisfy the building department with.
Then my recommendation is that we also invite the building department out that night.
I would, I'd invite somebody from building, yes.
Thank you.
I'll second that a minute. Motion to table it, invite to the next meeting, have someone from the building department?
No, we're going to send it to the business and community development, invite the petitioners and somebody from the building department.
Petitioner and building, building?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Mangan? Okay, you, all right, okay. Motion made in second to, uh, table it, I'm sorry, to refer the commi, uh, business community, business development, and invite the building inspector, or someone from the building department, and the petitioner. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move.
Item number nine, and refer it to the same committee with the, uh, same stipulations, inviting the petitioner and the, somebody from the building department.
To the business, uh, committee, and to invite the petitioner and someone from the building department. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
I also refer it.
And, and, and that was a petition for a lodging house license from Caritas Communities Incorporated, DBA, the Billmore House at seventy-six Norwood. Just so it's right before the public.
Okay, clerk will read, uh, ten, no, we did ten.
Item number eleven, a petition for a special liquor license for Village Fest, be it ordered by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, whereas upon application to this order, the City of Everett has applied for a special license from the City Council for public sale use in possession of beer and wine and the conception thereof on city property at a city-sponsored event, and whereas, the event is scheduled to take place Saturday, September seventeen, twenty sixteen, between the hours at three P.M. and nine P.M., on city-owned property to where the city street delineated on the map attached as Attachment A, and whereas the City Council finds in its judgment that the site described on Attachment A is an appropriate location for the condition applied for, that the use will not adversely affect the neighborhood, and that there will be no nuisance, true or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and be it hereby ordered by the City Council of the City of Everett, as follows, pursuant to the provisions of Section thirteen dash one, C one, of the revised ordinance of the City of Everett, the City Council hereby authorizes a special, by special license, the public sale use and possession of beer and wine and the consumption thereof on city property at the city-sponsored Village Fest event, taking place on Saturday, September seventeen, twenty sixteen, between the hours at three P.M. and nine P.M.
Counselor, uh, Delasola?
A quick quest, question if, um, it could be answered, if it rains Saturday, is there a rain date, and would the?
Nope.
License go over to the next day?
There's nothing here about a rain date.
But would that be an is?
I know.
Would that be an issue with the permit itself? If you grant them a liquor license for Saturday, and it rains and it gets canceled for?
I would think if that's, I would think they'd have to.
Just transfer.
Only asking for September seventeenth, no rain date mentioned.
Thank you.
Fable action?
Could we ran, rain your shit?
Second the motion? I'm sorry, get favorable action? Second. And, uh, wrote the yellow set? Counselor DeFlorio?
That, that actually was going to be one of my questions. If we could change it on the lame date, but if they don't request it, that's fine, legal.
Motion made in second for favorable action to grant the petition, any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mangan?
Yes.
Counselor Matuzki?
Yes.
Counselor Palatano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yeah.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you've granted the petition, Counselor Mangan.
Thank you, Mr. President, if we could, I know there's, we have a couple things, a bunch of things coming up with, um, Counselor McKinnon and McLaughlin that are not here, so, um, possibly we, maybe even lay some of those over to the next meeting for, so they can speak on them, but I'd like to take, if it's possible, to take a, make a motion to take, um, item thirty off the calendar, please.
Which number?
Thirty.
Second the motion. Thirty. We're waiting at twelve, aren't we?
Hmm?
At twelve?
Yep.
You're going to suspend it? With, with, with thirty? I mean, you want to sit with the other?
No.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
No, no, I don't want it.
Uh, motion made in second, we'll pick out number thirty.
It's going to have to go into committee.
All in favor? All opposed, number thirty is before you.
Did you want to make the motion to refer it to next meeting?
I just, I just, Mike, can you read the, you got to read the piece?
Item number thirty is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Hanlon, McLaughlin, McKinnon, a resolution regarding the stipends of boards and commission members.
Counselor Mangan?
Thank you, Mr. President, I know, like I said, I, as I just mentioned previously, um, some of this stuff will be laid over, I think this particular one, I know we did talk about it, several of us talked about it at the budget commi, at budget hearings and so forth, and it certainly, I know I do, I don't know if my colleagues agree with me, but a lot of these boards certainly are well underpaid, some of them haven't had increases in who knows how long, and to keep good people there doing it, you know, doing a good job and stuff, I mean, they have to be compensated fairly. So, um, what I would like to do on this particular piece, instead of just laying it over, send it into committee right away, because I believe the next time it's going to have, we're going to have a long discussion, why not just put it into committee now, get it set up, and then when the councils are, you know, they'll be back in a week or two, you know, and they'll be able to, to attend the committee meeting and so forth, and let's have a, you know, a lively discussion with the mayor, you know, in terms of, um, also maybe the, um, maybe the chief financial officer, Mr. Demus too, whatever, and maybe get an idea of, you know, what we're looking to, uh, to do here. Because I'm certainly in favor of, um, increasing the, uh, the stipends for these boards and commissions, commission members. I'd like to just make a recommend, I don't know which committee would be appropriate, Mr. Clerk?
Maybe I should read it first, uh, the, the entire, uh, resolution. Be resolved by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, that the City Council hereby respect, respectfully requests that as honor of the mayor through his human resources department, conduct an in-house study regarding the present level of compensat, of compensation for members of the various city boards and commissions.
Okay, then I, I make a recommendation that we send it into government operations, ask the mayor to attend, and then, um, you know, to get.
On the motion, Mr. President?
We could be doing a study now, what I'm saying is that way you can get the. To you, Mr. Pres, uh, President, to the clerk, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Mm-hmm.
In your opinion, would it be appropriate to send it to the mayor, or to send it to committee, or what would you?
Yeah, since, since we are requesting that as honor of the mayor through his human resources department, conduct an in-house study.
Okay, I make that recommendation, Mr. President.
I would just, uh, if you would add, add on to that, a time, a time period.
Yes, and if you could report back to us, say, the, uh, second meeting in September?
I'd probably give a little.
Give them, yeah, give them a month, I think that's enough time.
Counselor Matuzki?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, you know, I, I'm a little curious as to what other communities pay these, uh, various boards, the licensing board is a very busy board, as we all know, Board of Appeals, Planning Board, they're all important boards, the library boards, and the housing authority boards, uh, they, these boards, you know, a lot of these people get paid, uh, through a dimly lit bulb, and, uh, I think it's like, I know one person gets a check for eighteen dollars a month, you know, so, I'd like to know what other communities, especially Malden, cities that are like, like, almost like us, some of, well, for instance?
Revere.
I want to know what they're paying their, uh, people, Revere, so have that at the commit, is this going to committee, or? It's going to his honor. Oh, okay, but you could get that information for us? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to have that information, uh, before I vote on it.
We could ask the, uh, human serv, human resources to obtain that information for us, because they.
Well, that'd be good. That'll work.
Report back in a month, Mr. President.
Motion made in second then to refer this back to the human resources department to conduct an in-house study regarding the levels of compensation for the department, and also, uh, to have a report back by the second meeting of September, and also to determine if they would, cities and close proximity to Everett, what their boards and commissions are paid.
Good.
Got it? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, so move. Yep, refer it to the human services department.
Item number twelve, is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Napolitano, Counselor Capone, resolution regarding complaints of rodents around Florence Street Park.
Does Chairman accept the committee report placed on file, grant further time?
Do we have to report?
Yes. There's no qualms, so it's not really, so it's actually still in the committee, doesn't even really need to be on the, on the agenda.
Motion made in second, we'll back to committee.
I have no one but myself to yell at.
All in favor? All opposed, so move twelve.
Yeah. I'd just like to say a few comments on that, if I could. Item twelve, does it do with the Florence Street Park?
Let's not be for us right now, you want to ask?
I'd just be brief on that, Mr. President, I, I, I'm not on the committee that.
I know, but to stay, stay the way we're supposed to say, because we already passed, somebody move for reconsideration?
I'll make a motion to bring that back.
Motion made in second, please, second for reconsideration, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move, clerk, please reread item number twelve.
Item number twelve, be resolved by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, the City Council hereby effect, respectfully requests that Director Planning Community Development and Representative of the Mayor's office appear to discuss complaints for residents of burning Florence Street Park of rodent activity during park's reconstruction, referred to committee, no qualms was present.
Counselor Matuzki?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Counselor Napolitano just informed me, this was in the Public Safety Committee meeting, I watched it, uh, on T, uh, on the local cable TV, and I was quite surprised at the residents that attended that meeting, on the slow progress of this Florence Street Park, on the removal of the mature trees that were on that property, they're no longer there, I brought this up, I think, a few months back, and they're planting smaller trees, they're not, and it was very disheartening, and there's also, I don't know who the contractor is, but, the meadows, you know, that, that thing looks like it's been dragged along as long as the other one, so I don't know what goes on in these parks that it takes so long to get them completed, I just wanted to say that I've received many complaints on this rodent problem also. You know, um, I know a lot of these people, and it was sad to see them up here, but you know the good thing about it, Mr. President, to see, I haven't seen that many people come up to a public meeting, and had to be fifteen or twenty people there, and they all live there, and I know them all, and it was nice to see people actually getting involved and stating that they're very disappointed in the slow progress of that construction work that's being done down there, and, uh, and, uh, I've had some comments about the Meadows Park, but that's another matter, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, motion was to refer back to committee? No, motion, motion made in second, refer back to committee, all in favor? All opposed, so move. Item thirteen, please, Mr. Clerk.
Item number thirteen, non-res regulating can't collectors, be it ordained by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, to amend, after sixteen article four, recyclable materials of the revised ordinance City of Everett by adding, section sixteen dash one thirteen, beverage container collectors, subsection eight, collective email containers of beverage shall be permitted by the city clerk's office and to pay a fee established by the city clerk. Collector shall have pay, have said permit available for inspection while performing said task. Collector shall remove no other recyclable items such as metals products made of recyclable materials or items for the purpose of resale without first securing a junk collector's license. Collector shall follow such rules and regulations as set forth by the Inspectoral Services Department. This order shall take effect upon passage by the City Council and approval by as honor of the mayor.
Fable action? Motion made in second for favorable action, any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, call the roll.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Mangan?
Yes.
Counselor Matuzki?
Yes.
Counselor Palatano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yeah.
Counselor Hanlon? Counselor Simonelli voted no. Eight yeas, one nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, one nays, you pass the order.
Item number fourteen, non-sponsored by Counselor John F. Hanlon, non-res regulating drop-off containers, be it ordained by the City Council, City of Everett, as follows, whereas donation bins are important resources for many charitable organizations, whereas
the proper display and maintenance of said bins can increase their effectiveness while simultaneously reducing the probability they will become a source of litter and blight, therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Everett as follows, as section twelve of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett is hereby amended, adding a new section, twenty, two twenty-one out. Section two twenty-one, donation bins. What that L is for. A, definitions, using this section, the following terms shall have the meanings indicated. Donation bin, any container receptacle held out to a public as a place for people to drop off donated articles and to store such articles until cutted away. B, prohibitions, no person or other legal entity shall hold any donation bin out to the public for people to drop off articles unless the proceeds from the sale of such articles shall be utilized for charitable purposes. Two, no person or other legal entity shall place or maintain any donation bin on any premises open to the public except when issued a permit by the City Clerk. C, standards, registered nonprofit organizations are permitted to place used donation bins on non-residential property in accordance with the following. Any person or entity wishing to place or utilize a donation bin within the City of Everett in a place that is open to the public must obtain a permit from the City Clerk. There shall be no fee for an application or permit to place a donation bin, subject to the provisions of this chapter at any location. Only entities or organizations of attack status under section five oh one C three of the Internal Revenue Code as amended may apply for and obtain a permit. Proof of such tax status must accompany an application for a permit. A donation bin that is subject to the provisions of this chapter must have clearly identified in writing on its face the entity or organization that is maintaining the donation bin. A phone number and address for such entity must also be written on the donation bin. Non-residential commercial premises devoted to nonprofit purposes and churches are permitted to have up to three used donation bins. The bin shall be appropriately located as not to interfere with site triangles, onsite circulation, required setbacks, landscaping, parking, or any other requirements may have been imposed as part of the site plan approval for the premises, and should be placed on a concrete surface. The bin shall be of the type that are enclosed by using, by use of a receiving door and locked so that the contents of the bin may not be accessed by anyone other than those responsible for the retrieval of the contents. Each bin shall not cover a ground surface area in excess of five feet by five feet, nor be more than six feet in height. Each bin must be regularly emptied of its contents so that it does not overflow, resulting in used articles being strewn about the surrounding area. Submission of a letter of authority permission from the owner of the property upon which the bins are to be and/or are already located. And enforcement, penalties, or offenses injunctions. If any donation bins are placed without a permit or an inspection reveals that such bins are not in compliance with this section, enforcement and abasement shall take place as generally provided under this section. The owner less see or other or legal entity in control of the property where a donation bin is maintained in violation of this chapter and the person or entity which owns, maintains, or operates a donation bin in violation of this chapter shall be jointly and severally liable therefore. Code enforcement officers of the Inspectorial Services Department and the Everett Police Department are hereby authorized to issue tickets for any violations of this chapter. Any such violations are be categorized an offense punishable under chapter one dash eight of the revised ordinances of the City of Everett. Each day that the offense shall continue shall be considered a separate violation. Any additionally, the city may, in an appropriate case, institute a cease and desist order in the name of the city to assure compliance with the terms of this chapter. This chapter shall not apply to any donation bin that is located on the premises that is owned or leased by any religious or charitable organization. In the event that any provision of this chapter shall be deemed illegal or otherwise enforceable by a court of competent jurisdiction, then only that specific provision shall not be enforced, and all other sections and provisions shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you. Motion made in second, favorable action. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing done, clerk, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Mangan.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Aye.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Nine yeas, zero nays, you have approved the order. Clerk will read item number fifteen, please.
I swear this isn't his line.
No, I'm sorry, fifteen is done. Clerk will read item sixteen.
Fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
President, on the motion that reading item sixteen, can we just have the, is it still feasible to have the clerk read just what appears on the agenda? Because we all have it in front of us here. I mean, just for the sake of, some of this is very lengthy.
Just make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, the clerk read only what appears on the agenda.
Second, then.
Motion made in second, clerk will only read what appears on the calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Clerk will read just what's on the calendar.
Item number sixteen, non-sponsored by Counselor John Lee McKinnon, in ordinance adding rodent control to dumpster permitting.
Favorable action. Motion made in second, favorable action. Any further discussion? Hearing done, clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon. Whoops, Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Aye.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order.
If I may, Mr. President, there was one other Rodent Control one that I inadvertently left off the agenda. It has been published, however, and it'll be on in the next meeting.
Okay. Which one is that?
That was the general Rodent Control one.
Oh, okay.
I goofed.
All right. So clerk will read item number seventeen.
Item seventeen, resolution asked by Counselor Anthony DePiero, resolution questions citywide availability of knock-in.
Counselor DePiero?
There was a question regarding the, I believe the question was on pricing. I've been informed by the Health Department that that answer needs to be gotten from the Fire Department, not them. I guess they've done some research into it, the Fire Department. And I do have the name for you. It might be in that packet I left you.
I don't see it.
All right, I'll get that for you.
Would I be able to refer this directly to the Fire Department?
Absolutely, and I'll make sure it goes to the proper person.
All in favor? Clerk read item number eighteen.
Mr. President?
Yeah, that one you want.
Spend the rolls, take items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty collectively?
Motion made in second, eighteen and nineteen collectively, all in favor?
And twenty.
And twenty, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, that is.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty collectively. Clerk will please read each one.
Eighteen is a resolution sponsored by Counselor John Lee McKinnon, resolution regarding the street grate system and the location of Ashland and Compass Streets therein. Resolution sponsored by Counselor John Lee McKinnon, resolution regarding the hiring of full-time clinicians for the City of Everett. Number twenty is also sponsored by Counselor McKinnon, resolution requesting updates on the mosquito spraying and the Zika virus.
Mr. President, I'd move we lay this over to our next meeting?
Motion in second, make, motion made in second to lay eighteen, nineteen, and twenty over to our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move, next meeting. Clerk will read item number twenty-three.
Item number twenty-three, resolution sponsored by Counselor John F. Hill, a resolution adopting a City of Everett Hazard Mitigation Plan 2016 update. That is what you see here. If you like, I could read this.
Quite all right.
If you'd like. That's what Once Upon a Time.
No, we said just read the calendar.
Although it might be good to read the actual resolution, because it is brief, and it does give you an explanation. Whereas the City of Everett established a committee to prepare the Hazarded Mitigation Plan update, whereas the City of Everett Hazard Mitigation Plan 2016 update contains several potential future projects to mitigate potential impacts from natural hazards in the city, and whereas a duly noticed public meeting was held by the Planning Board on April twenty-second, twenty thirteen, and whereas the City of Everett authorizes responsible departments or agencies to execute their responsibilities demonstrated in the plan update, therefore be it resolved by the Everett City Council that to adopt the City of Everett Hazard Mitigation Plan 2016 update in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section four, and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Everett.
Yes, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, if I may. I realize that, you know, you need to, you need to adopt this in order to be able to qualify for FEMA funds, and it looks like it's an update to our two thousand and eight plan. Is there anybody in the audience who could speak to what those updates are? I don't know if there's anyone.
I don't see anybody. Anyone from the Mayor's Department understand what these updates to this plan is?
None right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's a hundred and fifteen pages. I just looked at this for the first time tonight. I'm sure there's nothing wrong with it. It's simply a resolution, but I'd like to lay this over to our next meeting, take a look at it, and I'm sure there's no harm in there whatsoever. But all the same, I don't like voting on anything. I don't know what I'm voting on, so I'd move to lay this over on the table to our next meeting.
Motion made in second to table this subject matter till our next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move. You have referred to our next meeting of the City Council. Item twenty-four, please.
Item number twenty-four, now, who are calling for the state primary on Thursday, September eighth, twenty sixteen, Representative Congress, Counselor Senator and General Court, Representative General Court, and Sheldon.
Yeah, peace, Mr. President.
Counselor Matuski.
I'm a little confused. I know there's a reason for it, but why did they switch from a Tuesday to a Thursday on primary day?
It's a Jewish holiday, I believe. And the state, state is the one that's, it's for the whole state.
Right.
It's, you know, so it's for the whole state.
Okay. Never heard of a Thursday voting.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Is that the first time?
First time, I recall, Counselor.
Oh, that, maybe that'll increase voting participation, maybe. And the other thing was, people can now vote over the counter, is that it?
Next, 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 next time.
Next time?
Oh, no, not the, not early voting, but yes, they.
Early voting for president?
Right, that'll be after this, right? Probably in October, late October.
Okay, so what's that, like, two weeks at a time, or?
Ten days.
Ten days? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But if people are going to be out of town or something, they can still come and vote over the counter. So let's clarify that.
For the primary, yes.
For the primary, for the state rep. If you're going to be away and you want to vote over the counter, absolutely you can. Thank you.
Do that in the presidential one, too. Kids are in college, somebody in the service, you can still vote.
You can't vote for the president now. We don't have the ballot.
You're right.
For the state primary, you can.
Motion, favorable action? Anybody? Motion. Thank you. Motion made in second, favorable action on the roll call for state primary, all in favor, signify.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Aye.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order, calling to the state primary. Clerk will read item twenty-five.
In order regarding polling hours and places for state primaries in the twelve precincts from seven a.m. to eight p.m. on Thursday, September eighth, twenty sixteen.
Favorable action.
I got favorable actions and seconded. Any further discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Aye.
Counselor Henley.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Eight yeas, zero nays, you have passed the order. Clerk will read item twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is a proclamation declaring September as recovery month.
Motion made in second, for favorable action. Hearing no others, clerk will call the roll.
Voice from.
No, it's a resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So move. Resolution has passed. Clerk will read item twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven, a resolution sponsored by Counselor Wayne Matuski, a resolution regarding airplane's noise levels on July twentieth.
Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this issue rears its ugly head. I just called in another resolution. It was too late to be on this agenda. It was just two or three nights ago. It was brutal again. We're talking every sixty seconds. This particular date, the way it's worded here in the resolution, that Mass Port directly be made aware that July twentieth, noise levels from airplane traffic occurred every sixty seconds, every sixty seconds for ten or twelve hours. Let's see, that's sixty an hour. That's six hundred planes going over Everett. That's just in ten hours. As I said earlier, Mr. President, there is a class action suit impending right now, which I'm part of, for the sleep fragmentation. I know it's amusing to some people, but not to me. And it's a quality of life issue. There were eleven people right now that are going to sue Mass Port. It's been done in other places. They have not responded. I asked the clerk tonight if the director has, the director of Mass Port has even acknowledged. Mr. Sousa and I have been in contact, and he hasn't got any information that I know of. But anybody that's, could sit, has a sleep problem related to noise, you know, and it all reflect, this is why I was talking earlier about it, Mr. President, this device, the decibel thing that we're referring to. Now, I don't know if you know it, our members know it, some do, some may not, but there was a device down on, down the other Madeline English School where the old D'Orio Brothers' mechanical shop was, River Street, that is.
Prescott and Tremont.
Tremont Street. There is a device that Mass Port has there that we haven't talked about in about twelve years. And I'd like, if it's possible, to send, I know it's not on the calendar, but if, through you, Mr. President, if we could ask our electrical department, or maybe Mr. Soper could just send somebody down there, see if that thing is working? Maybe that's an excuse, Mass Port's not using, you know, you know, because I know that's the air traffic flow, at least I think it is. And, and the other thing is to refer this, this resolution to Mr. Sousa, who was on the Mass Port Citizens Advisory Council representing Everett. But as a clause, if I could, Mr. President, indulge me and ask the building department or the electrical man to go down there and check out the Mass Port sound device antenna, I guess that's what they called it.
I know what it is. I know what it is.
Yeah, it's on a piece of city-owned land.
It is.
And see if it's working. You know, and I hate to keep bringing this issue up, but it is getting to be, even today, you know, I don't mind, I'm a reasonable person. I mean, you realize it, you know, a couple here and there's, but today was not any walk in the park either. And, you know, people are praying that, I shouldn't say we pray, but hoping that on a daily basis that they're not affected by these hundreds of planes. But we do have to get a communication. And Mr. Marazza, could you send this to the director as it's stated here, and also Mr. Sousa? Thank you.
Who's the director?
Jose Matos.
Mass Port director?
Oh, you mean that Anthony Sousa?
The Mass Port director.
Oh.
The name slips me, I know it's a little.
You send the two Matos there.
Hard to pronounce, yeah.
Know what you mean.
Thank you.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo those sentiments. It's a topic that unfortunately we have to keep talking about. I know the twentieth was a pretty busy day. That sound device that Counselor Matuski was talking about was put in place down there on Tremont Street in the nineties. I remember, because I was here. So it's been there that long. And the noise is unbelievable. And I know that Mr. Sousa is our representative. We've had him up here a couple of times, is it one of the meetings, the committee, and we're asking him to get some feedback from Mass Port, because clearly we're an impacted community. There's no way that you can say Everett is not impacted by the airport. You stand in your backyard, you look up, you can almost see what they're eating on the trays. So there's got to be something that they can do to offset this nuisance for the residents. So I wholeheartedly support my colleague.
Motion that is made to refer our electrical department and to the Mass Port director to determine if that piece of equipment on Prescott Street is still operational. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Mr. President, can we take items twenty-eight and twenty-nine collectively, spend the rolls, and lay them over to our next meeting? We'll have a clerk read them. I missed these two in the prior motion.
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine collectively?
Correct.
Correct. No, I missed these two.
Motion made second, take eight, twenty-eight and twenty-nine collectively, all in favor?
Aye.
Clerk will read item twenty-eight, please.
Item twenty-eight, resolution sponsored by Council John Lee McKinnon, resolution regarding state budget updates from Everett State delegation. Twenty-nine is a resolution sponsored by Council John Lee McKinnon, resolution regarding grading procedures on Ferry Street.
Like to lay these over to the next meeting?
Motion made second, to table items number twenty-eight and twenty-nine until our next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so move. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, okay.
Item number thirty-one, resolution sponsored by Council McLaughlin, Council DeFlorio, resolution regarding residency ordinance and hires in certain departments.
Mr. Chairman, could we please have the clerk read the questions, because I already gave to him, so.
Be resolved by the City Council, City of Everett as follows, that the City Council respectfully requested his Honored Mayor to his Human Resources Department revise the council with the following information: total number of relevant hires in fire, police, and DPW since passage of residency ordinance; two, total number of hires made in exception to the ordinance; and three, reason for the exceptions.
I'd like to refer this to the Human Resource Department, I believe, Human Resource, I believe they would have all the information, that we don't have to involve the fire chief or police or the mayor. And an answer back, I believe in one month, and if they don't have it in one month, we'll just grant further time. So the second meeting in September.
Anybody second?
Second.
Second. Motion made second, refer this subject matter to the Human Resource Department and to ask them to report back to the City Clerk, I mean, City Council, the second meeting in September. Okay, all in favor?
Item number thirty-two is a resolution sponsored by Council Fred Capone, resolution regarding studying of heavy trucking on Second Street.
Council Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an issue that I've been working on for a number of years. I know that my other colleagues in the ward have had concerns about this as well. It's, everybody locally agrees that we need to do something with this intersection. This is the intersection right across from the main Fire Department. That crossing light has been knocked over, I can't tell you how many times. Sadly, since I put this resolution on, it was knocked over again. It is absolutely amazing. At the local level, we all realize how dangerous this is, trucks going down Second, they can't make the turn, they come up on the sidewalk, they knock over light, we're all worried it's going to be a child, an individual, who's going to take the brunt of that down the road.